Louis Cruz, Southfield City Council President. We have everyone that is present today and I hope everyone has been safe. Families have been doing well again during these difficult times. We're going to start our meeting. This is a regular meeting of the city council taking place today, September 29th at 6 o'clock via web X. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Banks, Raza, Brightwell?
Yeah.
Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
I think Morris caught me. I'm going to unmute because there's a lot of people on our attendee list. She might have caught in on that. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I can hear you now. Yep, I can hear you now. Taylor?
Here.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. We have the mayor, we have other senior management on this line as well as city administrator, deputy city administrator, and our city attorney.
All right, thank you very much. We'll start off as always in our regular meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now move into our presentations portion to have a joint resolution that the mayor will present regarding domestic violence and awareness. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, council and members of the listening audience. Unfortunately, or sadly, domestic violence is something that occurs all too often in our city. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in conjunction with that, our police department, 46th District Court, The Haven, Martin Luther King Task Force, and a number of other entities are doing, trying to change the, this paradigm with domestic violence. And so we have a resolution this evening that speaks to, besides introducing Domestic Violence Month, that also speaks to the things that are going to take place this Sunday as we're doing an awareness walk. So let me begin. Whereas the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence Awareness Month first started Domestic Violence Awareness Month in 1981, and whereas in 1984, the Domestic Violence Against Women Act was passed, this was led by Senator Joe Biden and considered a landmark in the fight against domestic violence. Whereas sadly, family trouble and domestic violence calls to Southfield 911 are a daily occurrence in our city and have increased during the pandemic. And whereas the city of Southfield, Southfield Police Department, 46th District Court, The Haven, domestic violence group of Southfield, Martin Luther King Task Force will host the 2020 Walk to Bring Awareness of Domestic Violence on Sunday, October 4th, beginning at the Southfield Municipal Campus, making a loop around down Evergreen over to Red Paul Park and back. And the walk will be held at 11:00 and 2:00. We're doing social distancing, asking people to wear masks, and the walk is staggered. And continuing anyhow with the resolution, whereas it is obvious that more needs to be done to address domestic violence in Southfield than raising awareness of this societal problem. Drawing on the resources of the above referenced organizations, the 46th District Court is creating seminars that will be ordered for offenders of domestic violence as part of their adjudication. The court will also hold seminars for victims of domestic violence in hopes of providing skills and assistance in escaping toxic relationships. And whereas the Southfield Police Department will develop a domestic violence prevention response plan to identify private residences that have multiple domestic violence related calls to offer them assistance, counseling, and support services. And whereas additionally, the Southfield Police Department will develop a high-risk response team consisting of a multi-disciplinary group to plan a coordinated community response, including prevention and community education. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, city of Southfield, county vote, and state of Michigan do hereby recognize October 1st to 31st, 2020, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Southfield. And we encourage the citizens of Southfield to join in the observance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month and to continue to raise awareness by spreading the word of its emotional and physical impact. And signed this day, September 29th, 2020. I'm the council president. I'm looking for a motion by the council to adopt this resolution.
Absolutely. Council, I want that motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution for Violence Awareness Month.
Support. Councilwoman Taylor?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum. It's been moved by Ms. Taylor. We approve the resolution this evening in regards to Domestic Violence Awareness Month, beginning October 1st to October 31st. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Support?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yeah.
Banks?
Yes.
Resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month adopted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Mandelbaum?
I also, I wanted to mention, and I've had a conversation with the mayor as well as our police chief. Last week, I received a call from one of the Jewish organizations, Jewish, so the Jewish Domestic Awareness Advocacy Group, I forgot the official name, but it's something that was started back in the 70s that kind of fell off the radar. And they tapped me to be part of their new board, their new mission, and trying to help raise awareness for domestic violence, not only within the Jewish community, which unfortunately happens, but you know, within the greater community. They work with Haven and a whole bunch of other things. And unfortunately, because they were, they're still in the infancy in trying to reinvigorate this, this group, it was too late to join the march or the walk on Sunday. But we did have conversations with the chief and we're going to be working closely with him in training and making sure that, you know, we know what resources are available and everything else. I just, I just wanted to throw it out there that, you know, there's more, this is a bigger issue than people may realize, and there's a lot of different organizations that are trying to find ways to help combat domestic violence. So hopefully this will be a good partnership with the city when, once this organization gets, gets going again. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and again, thanks everyone for supporting this. I think this is a very important issue to be supportive of, especially in these times as we know things have become more contentious during the COVID crisis. So we want to make sure that we're on top of the city in supporting those that may be in difficult situations. All right, so we'll move forward now. We have consent agenda in front of us, council. I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through F, and I would like to pull G for just further discussion.
Well, we'd like to, why don't we discuss it now and then we can make the motion, we can read the motion. Well, what's, what's the issue with G?
Nothing really, I just, this is my first time seeing, and I heard about it earlier today. Can I get an explanation of, does this, does this cover the funds that we requested from the county? Cover all the COVID expenditures that we went through? Obviously, is, is, all money is good money in this case, but I just, I hadn't seen this before. And I just want to make sure, does it, it's inclusive of what we plan to receive for all the glass and everything we made preparation, or is this in addition to?
Sure. Mr. Zorn, would you like to take this or?
Mr. President, our Director of Fiscal Services is on the line, just so that you can be aware.
Okay, all right, very good.
I'm Michael's Director of Fiscal Services. I'm happy to step in on this one.
Go right ahead.
So this is unrelated to that, Councilman Brightwell. This was distributed by the state crew. I'm sorry. This was, they were referring to it as their revenue swap for August, so we did not receive our CVTRS statutory share in August, and instead they passed through this CARES Act money. And they, they, that was kind of the trade-off there. What we are doing with this is using it to supplement the public safety, public health grant amount that we won't be reimbursed because the program ran out of funds. So we had also applied for a little over $6 million from the state to cover public safety. That's our police and fire, first responders payroll for a couple months during the pandemic. As I said, that was a little over $6 million. The state had allocated $200 million for this program, and they received applications totaling about $350 million. So what they determined to do was to distribute 50% of the requests, so we got a little over $3 million of that, and then the rest is going to be prorated. So this 267,000 that we received under the CRLGG program, the Coronavirus Relief Local Government Grants Program, we're going to use that 267 to offset the amount that we won't get because of the proration.
Okay.
In addition to the 322,000 that we were approved from the county.
No problem. I, I wouldn't, I would not, not this money. But I know it popped up, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood what it was for. So Austin, based on COVID, are we still about $200,000 or $300,000 short based on what we expended while COVID?
I, we haven't looked at the lost revenues in a couple, in a few weeks. We were estimating a significant hit, especially as it relates to our parks and rec and our library and our court. We are still, we are still down from that, but we are, we are looking at every opportunity to recover whatever we can through whatever means. And there's, it's primarily the CARES Act funding. So there's the $6 million that we applied for from the state for our public safety salaries and wages. There was an additional grant for a first responder hazard pay that we just processed. That deadline was the 30th, actually tomorrow. And then there is the money through the county that we're applying for, and it's all essentially CARES money. And we, we're not quite done with that yet. So we are, we are seeking reimbursement wherever possible. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I should also mention the FEMA reimbursement that our emergency manager is working on.
Okay. Quite good. Mr. Chair, given those explanations, I'd like to reintroduce my motion to approve the consent agenda items A through G.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is City Administrator Zorn. I just want to be clear, item G, the actual action is to receive and place on file the communication that council has been notified that these funds are in play. There was a requirement in the submittal that required us to have verification that we presented this material to city council. And the actual action is to simply receive and place on file the communication.
Councilwoman Banks, I'll support the motion.
Hello?
I'm here. I don't know if some people dropped off. It looks like it was a, is Mr. President, are you still there? Looks like some.
You look like his microphone's off, but he's here. It's not.
It's kind, it looks weird.
I apologize. I have an electrician working here, and he just cut the power off to my computer. So I'm on my phone now. I apologize. So what did I?
We're just on the roll call for the motion.
Okay.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Consent agenda items A through G has been approved.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Pro Tem, can I ask you to take over the meeting for a moment so that I can just take a look at this and see what's happening right now? If you're available.
Yes, I'll go ahead and take over, council president. It looks like our next agenda item is a public hearing.
Madam Chairwoman, this is City Administrator Zorn. We're requesting that city council conduct a public hearing for the additional Community Development Block Grant funds in the amount of $49,829. This was advertised in the sun, and upon the conclusion of the public comment, we are asking council to act to authorize the, the adoption of the proposed amendment. And for the listening and viewing audience, the city was awarded under round three of the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant COVID funding, an additional $49,829. We are proposing to use 15% for administration. That amount is $61,474, and the remaining 85% for public services, human services. That's $348,355. Those funds will be used to help families, low to moderate income families meet mortgage, rental, food, and utility assistance with a cap up to $2,500 per household. And then we're asking council to hear public comment, then upon the conclusion, adopt the recommended resolution, which is in your body, which is in your packet.
All right, thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that is prepared to speak this evening?
Madam President, Pro Tem, please open up the public hearing first, and then we'll just formally open it up.
I apologize. We will now open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that is prepared to speak to the, to the hearing?
We'll wait a minute to see. As of right now, we don't have anyone, but we'll wait to see if anyone wants to speak to it. Madam President, Pro Tem. And I will mute all of the callers to see if anyone wants to speak to it, okay? All of the callers have been unmuted if anyone wants to speak to the public.
Hello?
Do you have a speaker, President Pro Tem?
Hello? Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
It's not coming across too well on the audio, listening to the, the computer as well as the phone. Can you please repeat what the public hearing is for?
2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant, third round funding request for public, for public hearing.
Is this anything to do with the CARES Act?
Madam Chairwoman, the answer is yes.
Cherry Crowe, through the chair, is it possible that you can explain it to audio? It's not really good. Please forgive my voice.
Through the chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
The city of Southfield, under round three of the CARES Community Development Block Grant COVID funded, has received an additional $409,829. We're proposing to use 85% of those funds for public services, human services, to provide up to $2,500 per eligible, income-eligible household to assist them with mortgage, rental, utilities, and food. The remaining 15%, or $61,474, will go towards the administration.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going, yes, go ahead. We're going to start the time now. You have three minutes to make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Administrator, for that. Please excuse my voice, and I hope that you can hear me. I'm in support of that particular block grant, but you have heard me talk about the fact that we need more funding for Haven. We keep hearing all of this dialogue about domestic violence being high on the rise, and it was high because of 2008. Now you're saying that it's high because of COVID. Domestic violence is what it is, and we really need to just make sure we are properly funding Haven's program. Also too, we have to make sure that we're reaching out to the community to make sure that they know that these services are available. And I think that we should make sure if the service is going to be available, that we do have expedited service. The people cannot wait, and I think we need to reduce the percentage for administrative costs. It would be great if there was no administrative cost, and if all of that money can go towards what it's intended to go for. I think you can do away with the administrative cost for this one time because of this pandemic, and it would really show the character of not only the administration, but the character of the city. So I want you to consider that, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers tonight?
No, ma'am.
This brings the public hearing to a close. We have another public hearing, and that is PSL.
Madam President, Pro Tem, Madam President, we need to vote on the public hearing that was just closed, the resolution for the Community Development Block Grant.
I'm, I'm sorry, I do, I do apologize. Can I have a motion on the floor?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 1920 CBDGCV third round funding request.
Support.
This is Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor, support.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor?
I need a roll call vote. Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Brightwell?
Yes, yes.
And Haskins?
Yes.
Resolution adopted for the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Third Round Funding Request.
All right, and thank you, Madam Pro Tem, for taking over for me for a minute so I can get things.
No, that's okay. My pleasure, my pleasure.
So we'll move on to item B, second public hearing, special use request of Kacossing And who's going to be leading out on this?
This is, hello, this is Planner Crowe. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. I can.
Okay. All right, thank you. The special land use request, PSLU 20-0010, also has a companion site plan, PSP 20-0008. I'll introduce both of those before we open the public hearing. Petitioner Kacossing Industry, Inc., on behalf of the owner, Great Lakes Water Authority. The property is located at 20920 East Street. If we can go to the next slide, please. It's on the east side of East Street between Shahuasi and West Eight Mile. Proposal is to construct two new water reservoirs totaling about 5 million gallons and a pump building, and to demolish the existing reservoirs and pump station. Next slide. This is the aerial of the existing conditions. Next slide. Current zoning is single-family residential, and it's consistent with the future land use plan. Next slide. The facility has been there for quite some time. This is a photo of the entrance of the facility from East Street. Next slide. This shows the proposed site plan as well as the landscaping plan. The existing two water reservoirs are located on the eastern portion of the property. They will remain in place until the new ones are constructed and up and running. Then they will be demolished, and a new retention basin and bioswale will be constructed in its place. Next slide. This is the existing area with the site plan superimposed. So this is a two-phase project. They're going to construct the new reservoirs while the existing ones are operating. Again, once the new reservoirs are up and operating, they will demolish the old water storage facilities. Next slide. This is a perspective of what the new ones will look like. Next slide. Some elevations of the, the pump station in the middle and the two water towers on the north and south. Next slide. Now, this is a rendering. If you recall, these large white gas station type, gas storage facilities, they are proposing to paint. storage facilities, um, they are proposing to paint these two new, uh, wards, water storage facilities to match the existing brick or the proposed brick of the pump stations. This is, will go towards their art requirement, and this has been vetted by the Arts Commission and approved. Next slide. Again, these are the, uh, showing the reservoirs in relationship to the pump station. Next slide. These are details of the pump station. Next slide. And, uh, currently, there is, uh, older chain link fence with barbed wire. Uh, we've worked with the applicant, um, to replace the older chain link and barbed wire along East Street that's fronting the residential with this high-grade, uh, black wireworks, anti-climb security, and welded fence, so that the aesthetic will be improved along East Street. Next slide. And, um, with that, there is some additional landscaping and some upgrades to the fencing along their frontage. I believe we have, uh, a whole team representing, uh, Great Lakes Water Authority. I believe Jim Miller and Andrew Jurgens, among others, are on the line. If you want to make a few comments before the public hearing is opened, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I, this is Jim Miller from Kocasing Industrial. We are a design-build general contractor under contract with Great Lakes Water Authority to build this facility. It's an upgrade to a facility that dates back to the nineteen sixties. Uh, I think even prior to that was the initial reservoir. So it is, it's, it's in deteriorating condition and badly in need of replacement. Uh, I'll let Andrew speak a little bit to the facility itself and how it fits into the overall system.
Yeah, this is, uh, Andrew Jurgens. On what Jim said, this is a near forty-five million dollar design-build contract. It'll improve the, uh, water service, uh, resiliency, regional water supply. So this, um, station serves, uh, more of southeast Michigan. Um, we've had to put an estimate on it between, uh, two hundred and three thousand, two hundred thousand and three hundred thousand people, you know, depending on system operations. So this is a, um, major project by GLWA that we're aiming to reduce long-term O and M costs um, due to the aging or end-of-service life of the existing facilities, as well as, um, improve our operations, um, at the, um, with the new facilities as well.
So if there's no other comments, Mr. Chair, we'll turn it back to you for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. And, uh, having heard the presentation, excuse me, uh, I would now like to open the public hearing. Uh, if there are any individuals that would like to speak to this matter and this matter only, um, please identify yourself by giving us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak to it.
Pamela Gerald, PR Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I hope you can hear me well. My voice is not serving me today. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. What is the material that's going to be used for the water supply device? That's the first question. The second question I wanted to know is, if there was any piping involved, is it gonna be copper, galvanized steel, or PVC? And my last question is, he talked about the, uh, art, art requirement, and they planned on painting art on this particular, uh, development. This is a great time to put Black Lives Matter somewhere on this new device because it's in a predominantly African-American populated area in the city of Southfield, south of Eight Mile. And then is there any jobs for the people that live in Southfield? And is this going to be paid for by Oakland County in conjunction with Southfield? Does Southfield have to do some kind of sharing match in terms of money? And I thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Mr.
We'll hold, we'll hold the responses until, uh, we've heard from, uh, any other residents, if you don't mind.
No, certainly. It's fine. Thank you.
Mr. President, at this time, we do not have anyone else for public comment for this particular public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, public hearing is now closed. Uh, gentlemen, you now can respond to, uh, the various questions that were asked, if you wish.
If, if I can remember all the questions. Um, the, the material for the structures themselves, the pump station in the middle, uh, will be brick and split-faced block in earth tones. The water reservoirs themselves are approximately twenty-seven foot tall and a hundred and ninety foot in diameter. They'll be, they will be concrete with a painted finish to match the colors of the brick and block for the pump station. Um, her question about piping, the greatest, well, all of the piping on this facility is either buried or inside the pump station or tanks, and it's all large diameter, twenty-four inch and above. Uh, it will be steel piping, uh, which, which is typical in this type of a facility. There really are no surface lines where she's referring to copper, steel, or PVC, or there's, there's no surface lines like that involved in this project. And this is a major pumping facility.
Yeah, if I can, this is Andrew. If I can just add on, every piece of equipment that'll be used in this project is compliant with, um, standards, NSF sixty-one, as well as American Water Works Association standards. Then, I think, um, another question on the, the funding, this is part of GLWA's, uh, capital improvements program. Um, so this is a budget internal to GLWA.
Gentlemen, there was two more questions. Um, uh, are there any jobs that are being created? You want to talk about that one first?
So there, there will not be any jobs created with this facility. This is, um, an existing facility that GLWA's operators, um, um, that we already have at the existing site. So this is, um, maintaining the function of the existing site will maintain the same workforce of the site.
And then the last question, if you choose to respond, was dealing with the art requirement.
Um, the, the art requirement that we propose by painting the reservoirs to match, um, the, the masonry structure in between them was involved, uh, quite a discussion with the Arts Commission itself. We have, we have no intention at this point in time, um, or budget to do, uh, any type of mural or signage on these reservoirs.
All right, thank you. And with that, through the chair, if I'd be happy to answer any other questions the council may have. And, uh, I recommend, well, uh, we should take the special land use first, and then if there's any questions on the site plan, we can go into that.
Okay, I'm, I'm back now. I'm sorry, uh, for the technical problems, everyone.
Through the chair, we, we, uh, we need either, um, a motion on the special land use or we'd be happy to answer any other questions the council may have.
Okay. Um, Ms. Banks, did you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do. Thank you. Um, to Planner Crowe, were, um, were there any questions, concerns, or comments from the residents in the area? I know they did not speak this evening, but, you know, when the public hearings were held, um, before the planning commission.
No, ma'am, we did not receive any, um, responses at all during this whole process.
Okay, thank you. It, it looks like it's a, um, nice, well-thought-out plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Brightwell?
Uh, yes, I have a question that I brought up the last time this came about. Uh, I think it was answered, uh, adequately by just, um, there are no climb fences. Um, I know you, water suppliers, you know, you're gonna have, um, very adequate security, but are these, these no-climb fences, is that state, is that state of the art now? Um, I, I don't know much about law enforcement, but is that the state of the art with respect to fence fencing?
Through the chair, um, we were concerned about the old, non-conforming, uh, chain link fence and barbed wire, and we had requested that Great Lakes, uh, install some type of, uh, more aesthetic security fencing. And so this is, uh, what is being proposed, and we, we are happy with, uh, what they propose. We, we did talk about a number of different types of, of security fencing, but we are happy with, with this. And if they, if, uh, someone from Great Lakes wants to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I can, Andrew Jurgens, just a comment on that. Our, um, security group recently, within the last couple of years, went through the exercise of looking at the fence systems and identified different newer options other than the barbed wire that would be acceptable for our facilities. And this, this water works no climb fence was identified by our security group as one of the acceptable solutions.
Okay, so you're saying it's functional, it's, it's functional for security purposes.
Right.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Uh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions. I think it's a great project, and I think the, uh, the proposed painting, um, to match the building, I think is a, is a great idea and a great addition, and, uh, will make the area look nicer.
Agreed. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Morris?
No, no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Taylor?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on the call have any other questions or comments or concerns? All right, um, then we need, I guess we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Councilwoman Brightwell. I make a motion that we approve special land use request, PSLU two zero dash zero zero one zero.
Support. This is Councilwoman Morris.
Okay, good. Moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we, uh, approve site plan as presented. Madam Clerk, we, please go to roll.
Morris?
Special land use.
Special land use, I'm sorry. Thank, thank, yes, Mr. Brightwell, thank you.
Okay.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Special land use request, uh, adopted.
All right, thank you. Your motion for the site plan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Councilwoman Taylor. I make a motion for the approval of PSP twenty dash zero 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 eight Site Plan Review Request of Kocasing Industrial, Inc.
Support, support.
Taylor, and supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve site plan PSP two zero dash zero 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 eight.
Through the chair, this is, uh, Planner Crowe. I just want to make sure everyone's aware. Uh, part of the site plan, um, conditions are, they have to receive, receive a waiver from the zoning board of appeals for the existing barbed wire that, that goes around the rest of the property, as well as the height of the fence. Other than that, all the other conditions are pretty straightforward.
Okay. Before we voted, any concerns with that at all, council? All right, hearing done, I ask the clerk, please go to roll once again.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Site plan PSP two zero dash zero zero eight adopted.
All right, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation this evening.
And, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
You, uh, that, that's all of our planning items for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, communications now. So, uh, the lines are open for anyone that wishes to, uh, give commentary to the council this evening. Uh, if you are, uh, if you do make a call in, please know that you have three minutes, uh, for your statement, and, uh, then we will have to move on to the next individual.
Good evening. Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. President, tonight, I would like to talk about Section eleven point eighteen. Eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled Amendments. Eleven point eighteen describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Unfortunately, eleven point eighteen conflicts with the not-so-easy-two-step Michigan State Law, AKA the Michigan Home Rule Act. Thus making Section eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter null and void. Eleven point eighteen became null and void when the Southfield authors of eleven point eighteen tried to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the Southfield City Charter. That's when the second step in a two-step process got deleted. Step number one, the Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then the next step, the missing step. Step number two, the Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election the aforementioned proposed charter amendment. Sad to say, eleven point eighteen deletes totally step number two, the ballot election. In a word, you folks here on this city council need to fix Section eleven point eighteen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is Pamela Gerald. I apologize to all the residents for my loss of voice today. We have talked about in the city of Southfield previously about some of about some of the racial disparities that we've had in our city and compliments to the city for trying to deal with those racial disparities by putting African Americans in leadership positions. I want to say that first of all, thank you so much. I want to appeal to the African American people on the city council and some of the city advocates. The residents voted to do away with the primaries. And you guys have taken it upon yourself to put the issue of the primaries back on the ballot. In my opinion, what you're saying to the residents is that they were not competent when they voted to do away with it. In my mind, it is not voter suppression. And to use those words during a time like this where racially we are in perilous times is not conducive to anybody. I want you guys to stop trying to taper and tailor this charter to fit your own political interests. If you want to run for mayor, get off the council and run for mayor. That charter is supposed to be resident friendly, administration friendly, where we can work together as a team. I am so sick and tired of all of you trying to tailor that charter for your own political needs and reasons. You owe the residents an apology because they took the time to get educated on the issue and why we wanted to do away with these primaries. You have basically called my residents colossally incompetent because you put this right back on the ballot. It's a disgrace. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And I want you to be very careful how you're doing things. You can't keep saying that something is improper and then you turn around and commit the same offense. Now think about that. Let your minds marinate on that for a bit. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have another caller. I just unmuted them. Caller number four.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
Okay, my name is Rhonda Terry. I'm the outreach case worker for the Southfield Human Services Department. And I just wanted to speak about the Southfield Goodfellows is seeking donations for our 2020 holiday giving. And I want to thank Allison Bettis and Rochelle Freeman Freeman for helping to spearhead our program this year. The Southfield Goodfellows annual drive to provide food, clothing, and gifts for low-income families in our community is facing a great challenge this year due to the COVID pandemic. This year, Southfield Goodfellows is seeking only monetary donations to purchase gift cards for low-income families and senior citizens that live in Southfield and Lathrow Village. The Goodfellows are asking individuals and organizations to donate by Thursday, October twenty ninth, 2020. To make a monetary contribution, please donate on the Goodfellows secure website at www.southfieldgoodfellows.org or you can make a check or money order payable to Southfield Goodfellows and mail directly to their P O box, two three three six Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. And also, if you have any further questions, you can call myself, Rhonda Terry, at Southfield Human Services, two four eight seven nine six four five four zero or leave a message on our twenty-four hour voicemail, two four eight seven eight eight five eight nine nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry, for that information. That was very helpful. We appreciate it.
Council President?
Yes, Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Could we have Ms. Terry slowly repeat the website for everyone again if someone wants to donate online?
Should I repeat the address where they can mail checks and money orders also?
Yes, if you could just repeat the information again, that would be helpful.
Okay, or you can mail a check or money order payable to Southfield Goodfellows, P O box, two three three six, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven.
All right, thank you, Ms. Terry.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we don't have any, that concludes our individuals participating in communications this evening.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, I'll turn to council now if there are any closing comments that we would like to make. I'll start with today with Madam Protim, Morris.
President, no, I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Taylor?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Banks?
Yes, thank you. I would like to invite, I would like to notify the listening public that the two thousand and twenty Household Hazardous Waste Event will be held in the city of Southfield on October twenty fourth at the Rassok Center, which is located at two zero eight seven five Maple Ridge Avenue in Southfield. The hours of operation will be from nine AM to two PM. This is going to be an opportunity for you to do your fall cleaning. And if you need to recycle clothing, shoes, papers, computers, this will be the time to take it to the center. They will be accepting electronic waste and up to three boxes or a hundred pounds of paper for shredding. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Banks. Mr. Brightwell?
No comments, no, no comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
Thank you. The only thing I want to say is absentee ballots are available. I encourage everyone to go vote. Please reach out to the clerk's office if you need a ballot. And it is very important this year, more than ever, that we are all out voting. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. And I think the entire council would support your commentary in that regard. Definitely get out and vote. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Hoskins took what I was going to say, but I will say that I have already received my absentee ballot in the mail and it will be going back to the clerk tomorrow as I've already filled it out. So, you know, don't let it, when you get it, don't let it linger in your home because you tend to forget about it. Try to fill it out right away. And I will be dropping it off in the drop box outside of City Hall. There's other options as well that I'm sure our clerk will will discuss. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. So I think I hit everybody there. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening once again. I want to first acknowledge the Detroit Lions Oakland County Urban Unity. On Sunday afternoon, we had another successful census event registering folks who had not yet done so. This was at Pebble Creek Apartments. We'd been making the rounds of apartment buildings. You may have heard that the census was predicted to end or extended to September thirtieth. There was a court order giving it another month. And today Commerce Secretary Wilbur Ross has, despite the court order, said the census will conclude next week on October fifth. So we're still urging people, if you have not signed up, it's very easy, takes a couple of minutes. The, and you can actually, you can call it in, eight four four three three oh twenty twenty. That's eight four four three three oh twenty twenty. I also want to mention that there will be a COVID testing site on Saturday morning, October third, from nine to noon. This is at the Silver Garden Event Center, the Shriners Center below Mount Vernon on Southfield Road. And this is being sponsored by Family Assistance for Renaissance Men, the farm group, and it's drive-through testing with done by the Wayne State University Physicians Group. People can register online or they can register on site. They'll do, besides COVID, they'll do blood pressure, HIV antibodies, and flu shots are also available again Saturday morning, nine to noon, Silver Garden Event Center. For questions, you call three one three seven one seven two eight eight two, three one three seven seventeen twenty eight eighty two. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Excuse me. Anything from administration tonight?
Yes, sir. This is Administrator Zorn. And just a few comments. As indicated by Finance Director Austin Michaels, the city has issued hazard pay to our sworn public safety officers as permitted by state statute. I want to thank council for the support on the Community Development Block Grant COVID funding. Particularly thank Rick Lampy and Rhonda Terry for the additional work in administering these programs in this time of crisis. COVID continues to be a major focus of the administration. And unfortunately, many of the numbers in Michigan are trending the wrong way and is very concerning. I want to just remind people to mask up, wash your hands frequently, please socially distance, get your flu shot, and please dispose of your mask and other paper goods properly. Still, a lot of parking lots are being littered with masks and that, and it's really unnecessary. That's all I have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Zorn.
Good evening, everyone. I have nothing to add, excuse me.
All right, thank you, Ms. King. We appreciate that. Going on to the manager.
Mr. President, I do have two items this evening. My first I'll address a couple of things in my comments. It's been a lot of rumors out here with this election and we have a lot of false information that's being spread. So I just want to just inform the residents that, you know, all thirty-six precincts will be open on Election Day here in Southfield. The polling locations will be open from seven AM to eight PM. I will also like to say that as of right now, we've issued thousands of absentee ballots. So Southfield has issued the most absentee ballots in all of Oakland County. So thank you voters for requesting ballots and we're getting those out as soon as possible. We're mailing out ballots every day. The post office has done an incredible job. Our turnaround time in some of the ballots have been as short as two days. Obviously, there's exceptions to everything, but they have really been delivering for us to make sure that our residents get the ballots. We are still asking for residents to allow seven to ten days to get the ballots. My office is open daily from eight AM to five PM if you did want to come in and vote in person. Over the last few days, we've had a steady flow of individuals that have been voting in person. So we want to continue to keep the momentum of voting. This is, as others have indicated, one of the most important elections in our lifetime. So again, all of our precincts are open. We are open for absentee voting. So I'll go ahead and transition into my first item. It is authorization to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. Myself, with the assistance of my staff, we recently applied for a grant for the Center for Tech and Civic Life. And the purpose of the grant will be to operationalize safe and secure elections. As you guys know, it's no secret, conducting elections through a pandemic has been very, is very hard and difficult. So I do want to thank my staff for all of their hard work. But we were able to receive four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-six, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grant money. This will pay additional hazard pay for the workers that are going to be working the election in addition to additional drop boxes across the city. So tonight, I will be asking the honorable body to pass a resolution so that we can receive this grant to use this money to help us administer a safe and secure election for November the third.
Are we looking for a motion? Council President?
Mr. President?
Sorry, I was on mute. My bad.
I need to authorize to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant as proposed.
好的，这是 Councilwoman Taylor.
All right, I heard about five supports. So it's moved by Ms. Banks and the last one I heard was Ms. Taylor. So we'll say it was seconded by Ms. Taylor that we approve the authorization to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. Clerk, will you please call to roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor? Cruz?
Yes.
Resolution adopted for the authorization to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant. Thank you, council. My next item is in this. We will be allowed to purchase secure ballot boxes. We have already installed two that was previously ordered, one by the library and one in the quarter sack in front of City Hall. We are looking to install additional ballot boxes throughout the city for the convenience of our residents. And this grant that you guys just approved will allow us to do that. But part of our charter also states that we can buy these additional ballot boxes without competitive bidding in accordance with chapter eight of our our charter. So I am asking if council would adopt a resolution giving permission to purchase additional ballot boxes from a company called MB Central Enterprises that's located in Texas so that we can get abrupt delivery of these items and have them mobilized for our residents.
So Madam Clerk, just a question. How often would those ballot drop boxes be checked? Are they on a daily basis?
It'll be checked multiple times a day.
Okay, so it will be sure to get to the clerk's office probably sooner than mailing it, am I correct?
Correct. That's the whole purpose of the ballot boxes is to have an expedient way to make sure the ballots are getting to the clerk's office outside of the U.S. Postal Office Service.
Awesome. And they are secure and everything so that they can't be tampered with?
Correct.
That sounds like an excellent. All right. That sounds like an excellent idea or program to me. Uh, council, any questions? Or do we have a motion?
I have one question.
Right ahead, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Will, will there be either on the web or through cable, a location of all these boxes?
Right. I just had to get them approved before I did any of that. So, um, so that council's approved them. We'll look at the locations and make sure that that's put on the website. So I couldn't do that before they were actually approved.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can make a motion that we accept or al- allow the purchase of the secure ballot boxes?
Support.
Support, Councilwoman Morris.
They're moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the purchase of the secure ballot drop boxes, uh, for the city clerk's office. Uh, are there any other questions or concerns before we vote? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rolls?
Brightwell?
Yes, yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Resolution adopted for the purchase of the ballot boxes. Thank you, council.
All right. No, thank, thank you. And, uh, that was a pretty hefty grant. You, uh, secured for the city. And so we appreciate your hard work on that, too. Um, uh, let's move on now to, uh, the treasurer. Ms. Loenberg, are you, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, uh, share good news, uh, I've shared with the council finance committee already, but hopefully the rest of the council, uh, received a copy of the report. But, uh, we have, uh, had a, a very good year. This past year, uh, we got our, uh, outside consultant's, uh, review of the performance for our bonds, uh, investments. And based upon the investment policy that council approved and, uh, the overview of the council finance committee as well, uh, we an- actually ended up in the second percentile in the country. Uh, we earned over five percent for our investment performance. And so, uh, thank you very much for council for allowing, uh, the investment policy that we have to give us the flexibility to, uh, do very well for, and conservatively for our citizens. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Loenberg. That's great news. Appreciate that. Uh, anything from the planning department?
Uh, the chair, this is Planner Crowe. I just wanted to mention that two of the three peace poles were installed on Friday. We had some underground utility conflicts with the third pole. We're resolving those, and as soon as we get that corrected, we'll have that third pole in and then some landscaping done. And we'll keep you posted.
That sounds great. Thanks, Terry. I really appreciate it. You guys have been working hard on that. So I thank you for, for your efforts. Cool.
All right. Thanks.
Is our assessor or engineer, uh, on line, have anything to offer before we adjourn? Okay, we have, uh, nothing, nothing to schedule at this point and no ordinances to approve. We're going to postpone the closed session this evening to a date uncertain. So, um, I will be getting back with council in terms of, uh, when we will be, uh, taking that meeting on. So, um, with that being said, uh, our meeting has come to a close unless there's anything else that anyone has for the good of the order before we adjourn. All right. I don't hear, hearing none, uh, I will call this meeting adjourned.